We will call to order the public hearing for the notice of public hearing on the proposed budget and including the proposed increases for certain existing service and user fees and certain charges predominantly related to water and sewer rates. The press and public have been notified according to the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. From staff pursuant to Section 6-1-80 and Section 6-1-330 of the South Carolina Code of Laws, public notice was given that the City of Casey, City Council would hold a public hearing on the proposed municipal budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, including proposed increases for certain existing service and user fees and certain charges, predominantly related to water and sewer rates, to be adopted as part of the budget ordinance. The 2025-2026 fiscal year general fund revenues and expenses are $19,807,548, which includes a proposal to increase mileage by three mils. The 2025-2026 fiscal year utilities fund revenues and expenses are $27,969,507, which includes a proposal to increase service and user rates by 3%. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to hear comments and concerns about the budget being proposed and for council to take second reading action on the budget. The full budget before council tonight, including general fund and utilities, is in tonight's agenda packet and was also detailed in the flyers that citizens received on their roll cards. Council looks forward to hearing from the public. You do not have to have signed up to speak during the public hearing tonight. Anyone who would like to come forward to speak may please do so. All right, hearing no public testimony, we will close the hearing. I will now call to order the regular council meeting of Tuesday, June 3, 2025. The press and public have been notified according to the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. I believe Councilmember Sox has an indication?
I do. Pray with me if you will. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to meet here tonight to discuss the business of our city. I pray that the work we do and the actions that we take reflect your will and pray that they reflect the best interests of our city and its residents. We thank you for our staff and pray that you're with our first responders tonight and always, Lord. We also thank you for their courage and willingness to protect our city. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have a special guest leading us in the pledge. As she comes up to stand by me, I'll tell you a little bit about her. Mrs. Vernitha Wanamaker was born in Orangeburg County. She is still going strong, as you can see, doing the work of the Lord. Many of her, most of her adult life, she has been a helper to some and giver to others. Ms. Bee, as she is known, moved to Casey in 1956 to be a day's worker for Mrs. Pound. She had four children, one son, Michael, who was stillborn, two daughters, Betty Ann and Elaine, who died at an early age during a lightning episode, and Gladys, who lived until adulthood but died from cancer. Ms. Bee herself has had a brain tumor, which was operated on a Tuesday and walked into her church, New Life Missionary Baptist Church, on a Friday. She has been a volunteer at Dorn VA Hospital in Columbia for 23 years and still going strong. She was a member of the Casey West Columbia branch of the NAACP, from which she has won many awards as the Woman of the Year or Runner-Up and a founding member of the Julius Felder Coalition for Change. She is the original chaplain, a position that she still holds. Ms. Bee has been a member of New Life Missionary Baptist Church for over 50 years, many of those years as a member of the Usher Board and also as a Sunday School teacher. Ms. Bee is still working as a day's worker and has been with the Seastruk family for 48 years. She is a prayer warrior, a visitor to the sick and needy, a dutiful missionary, and a friend to all. Her motto is, "I'm just a child of God trying to get home." Amen. 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 Right, we'll face right here and do the pledge. You ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if I'm correct, I believe she had a birthday not long ago and turned 80.
I had a birthday, 80, for the post, 1930. We were born, so count it.
Who's good with math? Count that. 93?
Nice.
Wow. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank God I'm still here. Mother fortune, they all he have, he see fit, they had the reason to take their moment. But he want me to stay here and help while I can.
Okay. Take your time. Take your time. Take your time. Okay. Next, we have approval of minutes. May 6, 2025, regular council meeting. May 8, special council meeting. May 21, regular council meeting.
Motion to approve all three.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call the question. Mayor Protem James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sox?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor? Yes, thank you so moved. We have public comment regarding items on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have six people signed up. First is Ally Walker. I guess item agenda, excuse me, agenda item 3A, city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff, and Casey residents. I want to thank you for the opportunity to say a few words today as we honor someone who's been an outstanding leader and a tremendous partner, Jim Crossland, who will be concluding his service as Casey's city manager at the end of this month. As a community partner that has had the great privilege of working closely with the city, I can say without hesitation that Jim has set the standard for what effective, collaborative, and visionary city leadership looks like. His tenure has been marked by a clear commitment not just to manage the city but to elevate it, in doing so with professionalism, integrity, and tremendous amount of heart. From day one, Jim has fostered a culture of openness and responsiveness. Whether it was a large-scale initiative or a simple question about a project, he made time to listen, to problem-solve, and to seek genuine collaboration. He understood that partnerships between the city and the broader community are essential, and he made those partnerships stronger. It is not an exaggeration to say that Jim has been a truly exemplary leader. Over the course of his tenure, he has guided the city of Casey with integrity, vision, and unwavering commitment to public service. His leadership has been marked by thoughtful decision-making, steady stewardship, and a genuine dedication to his job and the people he works with, along with a very good sense of humor. He has not only been a reliable leader but also a trusted ally, someone who understands the value of working together to accomplish goals. His impact will be felt for many years to come. But perhaps most important, he has led with heart. Whether working behind the scenes to ensure city services run smoothly or standing at the forefront during times of challenge, Jim has been accessible, thoughtful, and a steady presence in both the calm and not-so-calm times. We've had a few of those, right, Jim? I would like to thank Mayor and council once again for giving me the opportunity in this public forum to express my sentiments, and I speak on behalf of the entire staff at American Engineering Consultants. Jim, you leave behind a city that is stronger, more connected, and better prepared for the future, and that is a legacy to be incredibly proud of. On behalf of the entire team at American Engineering who have had the great pleasure to work with you, thank you. Casey is undeniably better because of your leadership, and though we are sad to see you go, we are immensely grateful for the time you gave, the work that you have done, the example that you have set, and most of all, for your friendship. You leave some big shoes to fill, my friend, and my hope is that the city will find someone to fill your position with all of these amazing traits. You will be deeply missed, and we wish you nothing but success. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Next is Scott Lambert, item 3A.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you guys today. My name is Scott Lambert, one of the owners of Steel Hands Brewing. We've been in Casey for about six and a half years, going on seven, and really pride ourselves on being a great business in the community. We've worked with pretty much everybody here, including city officials, the police chief, council members, fire department, as well as three city managers. And we take a lot of pride, like I said, in the city, and that's displayed in many ways. It's in our fundraising we do for events like Steel Paws, hosting free live music for the citizens of Casey and the surrounding areas, and really creating a family-friendly destination for people really all over the country. We get folks from all over the country that come to Steel Hands, which is incredible. And part of what I want to talk about tonight is the city manager plays a key role in all this, from Rebecca Vance, that first brought us to Casey, to other city managers along the way, and particularly things that Jim has done for us. I think there's really five key points I want to talk about tonight. The first is pro-business and being accessible. Understanding the challenges, as a city manager, really understand the challenges of local business face, from permitting to operational issues, regulations to expanding operations, and really working for a mutual beneficial solution to problems. The wastewater issue really has followed us for five years here, and Jim, I can't thank you enough for your attitude. And really, when you came to us and said, "Hey, how do we get a solution to this?" I know you guys have worked on this for over five years now. How do we approach this? And I just really appreciate your attitude and the way you approached it with us. And really being visible and engaging with the business and community, I think that's super important for a city manager, and I think you always display that with us, you know, along the way. Also, being very collaborative and community-focused, supporting local events, live music, entertainment, parks, arts, attracting the people to Casey. And really, at the end of the day, we're enhancing the quality of life of the citizens here and continuing to grow the economy. I mean, that's what businesses need, right? We need to continue to grow the economy. And back to listening, I think, again, you've always been great at listening, Jim, to what we needed and reached out to us, and we just want to say thank you for that. Also, as a city manager, championing public-private partnerships and really being a visionary and also having a follow-through, not just talking but actually, you know, following through with solutions. So what's next for Casey? That's not just managing growth but also helping shape it. So as you guys seek a new city manager, you know, at Steel Hands, we really want you guys to seek somebody that wants to shape the community and shape small businesses and what that looks like. That also may mean taking a little bit of a gamble, and you guys gambled with us when, you know, you helped us acquire the property. So I think having that kind of approach as a city manager is very helpful. Also, we've met and talked about seeking out grant opportunities for such things as like the rail-to-trails, so we'd like for us to continue to pursue that and your next city manager to look at that. And again, that's just something else that helps enhance the community for the city of Casey. Again, encouraging tourism, people to come to Casey, have a great time here. Also, being responsive and transparent, you know, so whenever we ask a question, you know, Jim was great at getting back with us, you know, said, "Hey, look, I'm going to get back with you within a week." He got back with us in probably three or four days. So again, I think all these are attributes as you're seeking to do city manager, things that mean a lot to a small business like us. And last but not least, they need to love craft beer. So anyways, but thank you for the opportunity. We look forward to the continued growth of City Casey, and thank you.
Mayor, next is Michael Mayo, item 3A.
Hey, Mrs. Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me. My name's Michael Mayo. I'm with Palmetto Outdoor. We're your local tube and tour outfitter here in the city of Casey and West Columbia. We're proud of the west side of the river and the opportunities that it has to offer. I'm speaking on behalf of the company of Palmetto Outdoor, but I'm also here to talk about Jim and the vision that he had for the city and his ability to work with not only businesses but the local community in creating events. And so I have a statement here from all of our friends, Steve Cohen. I know that we've all had, if you've got to meet this guy, it is a blessing. It's an opportunity to see someone who's really passionate about helping the area. And first, I would like to start by reading this message from Steve. He couldn't be here. If I know him well enough, he is busy at another council meeting, working on one of his many ventures, but this one, I think we all here in this room will know what Steve Cohen is referring to. But it starts with this. "I have been involved in the CWC chamber in many capacities for a long time. I can go on and on about the ways Jim has been there to help, but the one that stands out, stands out the most is the annual Christmas parade. Every year since we moved the start of the parade to the Casey end, Jim has been there with us to help organize and get it started. From his role in law enforcement to becoming assistant or interim chief city manager, Jim was ready. With a can of chalk, he helped us mark the road and line up the floats. No other administrator or law enforcement person has ever done that. And now, and Jim and I now live just outside of Ermo. So if there are any events you need help with, I will be there for you if you ask." And again, that's a message from Steve Cohen regarding our good friend Jim and all that he's done. And I got to be a part of one of those parades with a bus lit up. It just so happened, it was the one parade that got, that ended up getting canceled because of rain, which was a wise decision, but it was a lot of fun to line that bus up right outside of this building, feeling like we were going to race start a NASCAR race or something. But it's a good time. But again, Jim has done so much for this area, for the community, and it stretches beyond the limits of the city of Casey. We have felt this impact all the way up north, and I'm sure they'll feel it all the way down south from here. But I agree with our good friend Steve Cohen. Jim's, for us, Jim saw the potential in recreational opportunities, which we like to refer to as recreational assets. Utilizing the river and its riverbanks, we worked together to bring tubing and tourism to the city of Casey. We also, with recreational access point in the city of Casey that's just for recreational boats, we were able to offer our guests an experience that can reduce the age limit from 10 years of age to six. This puts many more family units on this river in our backyard. The trip's about an hour and a half long from the Gervais Street Bridge down to the Kelly Jones Park where the new recreational takeout is. And along the way, you get to see some trains, you get to go through some locks, and I know personally, as a child who floated down this river many, 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 many times, there's nothing better, there's no better section of river than the one that lies right outside of Casey. So with more tourism, we get, we get more ATAX and HTAX to help fund more projects and more ideas to bring, and bring more tourism. But more importantly, we are creating community assets here in our backyard, and we like to say that we use recreational assets as a means for relocation. The more public assets the city has, the more opportunity that a family has to pick from when they decide to move to a new location. And I could promise you, they're coming from Florida, and they're coming from DC, coming from Wisconsin, Minnesota, from all over the nation. But I would most, most want to, I just most, I'm here to thank you, Jim, for the time that you took, how available you are. I agree with everyone who has already spoke. You were quick to call us back. We worked together to find a solution, and this man has the patience to see a project to the very end. Now, this recreational landing took more than a year. It took a couple of years, but when it, when it comes to the grind of getting projects done, this is the quickest project I've ever seen from beginning to completion, and that happened because of you, Jim. So thank you. We are excited to see what the city does with the next administrator, and we are here to do all we can to support that and carry on the vision that the city sees fit. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next is Chip Salak, item 3A.
Those are going to be hard to follow, but just, my name is Chip Salak, and I'm resident of Moss Creek subdivision. And I started coming to these council meetings right after the last election to have a better understanding and better knowledge of how the city is working and if there's any part that I can play in it, I was looking forward to that. So one of my first meetings that I came, Jim came up and introduced himself to me, and I introduced myself and called him Mr. Crossland, and he quickly said, "Call me Jim." And so in the brief time that I've known Jim and what little workings that I've had and what little conversations that we've had and have watched him, I've learned much of what you've already said. He's a man of great integrity. Obviously, with the time that he has spent with this city in different roles, he's got a great passion for the city of Casey and all the things that he's done. He's shown a great amount of compassion when I watched him talk to other people in the room and different things like that. I know he's a very dedicated individual, works hard, obviously by the results that we've seen, he's worked hard, and he's extremely humble. So he's going to be extremely missed. The old saying, I guess, is our loss is somebody else's gain, but my hopes is that the search committee, when you're looking for a new city manager, that not only do they understand the workings of our city, but we hope and our prayer is that the person that you choose will display the same type of characteristics that Jim has explained, has done over the years that he's been here. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Salak. Next is Mr. Mark James, item 3A as well, I assume? Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark James with Cypress Real Estate Partners. Thank you for the opportunity to address you, Mayor, and members of council, and most importantly, my good friend, Jim Crossland. It's a little bit unusual for me to be here under circumstances like this. It's usually coming in and with a project in mind or something, but this is an opportunity for me to say thank you to Jim and how much I've enjoyed the last, I guess, four years that we've worked together. Our history in Casey goes back to 2018, and I can tell you without a doubt the breath of fresh air that it came from working on the things that came up along, the multiple projects we worked on, whether it was some of the stuff on Knox Abbott Drive or Poplar Street or, most recently, Hattie's Crossing. The spirit that you came to all of those conversations, I can't articulate any better than what has already been said here today. I can echo it. You came at it with a spirit of collaboration, your communication, your follow-up. One of those few people that I felt like I never had to follow up and say, "Where are we on this? Have you heard anything? Any update?" He was always ahead of me in those follow-ups, and it would be an email or a text message at long hours, and I can only imagine how many other people you were having to do that with, and I'm grateful for that. And the leadership skills that you exhibited for your planning and zoning staff, I thought were exemplary, and I think certainly my experience has been nothing but positive. And your ability to understand the vision and, you know, the council and mayor set, the big-picture vision for where Casey goes, you've been, as the city manager, the person charged with implementing that on a day-to-day basis, and I can't think of anybody that could have done a better job than you did. And as somebody said earlier today, Casey's loss is someone else's gain, but glad you're not going far and appreciate everything that you've done and the hard work and commitment that you've made have definitely made Casey a better place to live, work, and play, as we've heard. So thank you for everything.
Thanks, Mark.
And I've got every confidence that council's going to bring somebody in who is going to take the lead from Jim and bring some of those same skills, and I'm grateful for the transition that you get to make, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be a part of Casey. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Next is Ben Kelly, item 3A.
I'd like to thank everybody here, the mayor and council, and especially Jim. As a relatively new resident in Casey, last four years, having been born here some 62 years ago, we've seen a lot of change and have experienced some of that change in the last four years. We've been looking hard at this area from a development standpoint, have been working on a lot of new assignments over here, having started over in West Columbia and helping to recruit some of the businesses there. We see a lot of excitement and possibility here, and Jim has helped with that over the last, for me personally, three years, as has all of this council. I hate to see you go. Feel like we're just getting started over here, but I wanted an opportunity to tell you thank you. We see great things and hope that your replacement is forward-looking and is easy to deal with and get in touch with and communicate with as you are, and just wanted an opportunity to say thank you.
Thank you very much. That's it, Mayor. Okay, thank you. All right, we have a presentation by Ms. Lynn Dooley, Director of Human Resources, regarding an update on the city manager search.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just want to give you a really quick update. At the May 21 council meeting, city staff received comments from council that were used to finalize the job description for the city manager position. The vacancy was posted May 23 on the city's website, was distributed to several professional organizations and social media platforms to ensure broad visibility. The city is accepting applications through Friday, June 6. Once the application period closes, city council will conduct interviews with selected candidates. We will continue to keep you updated on the progress. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley. In addition to interviews that we have scheduled for June 6, Mayor Protem James and Councilmember Sox sent emails asserting that they would also meet on the 9th and 10th when I'm not available. Our next city manager deserves to be set up for success. Holding interviews when any one of us can't be there sets a poor standard, so I need to ask for clarification. Is that when meetings are going to be held? Interviews going to be held?
I do not know that we even have any others at this point, do we? Not to put you on the spot, but I don't even think there are any others.
Okay, so we just have the three We, we see great things and hope that your replacement is, is forward-looking and is easy to deal with and get in touch with and communicate with as you are. And just wanted an opportunity to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a presentation by Ms. Lynn Dooley, Director of Human Resources, regarding an update on the city manager's search.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just want to give you a really quick update. At the May 21 council meeting, city staff received comments from council that were used to finalize the job description for the city manager position. The vacancy was posted May 23 on the city's website, was distributed to several professional organizations and social media platforms to ensure broad visibility. The city is accepting applications through Friday, June 6. Once the application period closes, city council will conduct interviews with selected candidates. We will continue to keep you updated on the progress. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley. In addition to interviews that we have scheduled for June 6, Mayor Protim James and Council Member Socks sent emails asserting that they would also meet on the 9th and 10th when I'm not available. Our, our next city's manager deserves to be set up for success. Holding interviews when any one of us can't be there sets a poor standard, so I need to ask for clarification. Is that when meetings are going to be held? Interviews going to be held?
I, I do not know that we even have any others at this point, do we? Not to put you on the spot, but I don't, I don't even think there are any others.
Okay, so we just have the, the three interviews on Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
Present.
I don't know, she said to wait, it's clearly.
Lynn. Ask your question.
So, we currently have three interviews scheduled for Friday. The positions open until 5:00 on Friday, so any applications that we receive between now and that time will be rescheduled, will be scheduled at a later date, to which I have not been given a, a time for the remaining interviews.
Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, this is probably the most critical decision that we've got to make as a council, choosing the person who will follow in Jim's footsteps and who will lead City Hall, and every single one of us needs to be a part of those interviews. But more than just hiring a city manager, I think we also are presented with an opportunity to turn the page in Casey city government, to leave the past behind, an opportunity that we ought to embrace. I can't think of a worse message to send to the public, nor a worse message to send to our new city manager than to hold interviews when we can't all be there. Also, while we're on this item, Phil has done a really good job with leading this process and getting a job description that we all could agree on. Thank you, Phil.
You're very welcome.
However, we did receive a suggestion from a citizen a few days ago, sent to all of council, but directed at the mayor. The message was that the job description was incorrect. It said that it shouldn't include the word "mayor" in it. As the position of mayor is a part of council, it would be correct to say, "The city manager reports to council." It's also correct to say, "The city manager reports to mayor and council." Neither way would leave out the position of the mayor. This citizen had concerns that we weren't operating within our form of government, or rather, what I think he meant was that I had overstepped my bounds. But as he and everyone saw in the three-part motion made two meetings ago, Councilman Carter was voted by a majority of council to lead this process, which he did and has done a great job with. As well, the vote was unanimous for approval of the job description as it was posted. All of those things are well within our form of government, so every citizen can take pride in that. Even though Mayor Protim James and Councilmember Socks directed Councilmember Carter to change it, council has not asked for that wording change to be added to the agenda for a vote. So, all the job descriptions should currently read "mayor and council."
So, the job description has not changed, and yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right.
Mayor, I might note that the ordinance says that the city manager shall report to council. It does not say "mayor and council," and that was the reason for the question, I think, from the citizen. But we, we're making a big deal out of nothing, to be honest with you. It's, it's not that big a deal.
Yeah, it's semantic, so we should just focus on hiring the best person.
Exactly. Let's move on.
Yep. Okay, next we have a presentation by Mr. David Sykes with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated on the city's brownfield grant program.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council, and Jim. Sorry, we won't get to work together on this, but glad, looking forward to working with Wesley and the other city staff. Yes, Stan Tech was hired recently. I think we signed our contract with the city for the brownfield grant last month, so we're definitely in the early stages of the project. Little bit of a background, Mayor, if it's okay, if I give to the, about the brownfield program. Brownfield program was started by the Environmental Protection Agency in 1995. It has grown into a very competitive program throughout the nation. The city receiving the grant is a, is an excellent thing. And so, at Stan Tech, we are, we are definitely excited about the opportunity to work on this. Stan Tech as a whole works on, works with communities across the nation on this same brownfield program. And so, having Casey here close by to me where I'm at was exciting. And so, but, but the program is intended to redevelop commercial and industrial properties that are either vacant, idle, or underutilized. And so, many towns across, across the nation have these types of properties. And so, the grant is there to provide environmental site assessment assistance through Phase 1, Phase 2 environmental site assessments, community outreach to educate the community on the importance of brownfields redevelopment, and then also cleanup and redevelopment planning activities. And so, I'm going to get it a little bit about each of those. As I said, we started less than a month ago. We've hit the ground running. We've working on revising the community involvement plan slightly that had been done previously to just incorporate some new ideas for outreach. One, as I mentioned, outreach to educate the, the citizens about the importance of brownfields redevelopment, but also to get the word out more to local realtors, developers, lenders, property owners, that the grant funding is available to, to those in the city. And so, and EPA strongly encourages community outreach under these projects, and so, that's one of the first things that we, that we've started working on now. Under the grant, Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental site assessments, as well as asbestos, lead-based paint surveys, generally make up about 75% of the funding spent over the life of the grant. And so, any environmental due diligence project that occurs generally requires a Phase 1 environmental site assessment. And so, that's basically just looking at the history of the property, walking the property, and so, that's the first stage. If that Phase 1 identifies some concerns, then we get into Phase 2, which is soil and groundwater testing. And so, when you put Phase 1 and Phase 2 assessments together and hopefully working on 10, 12, 15 different properties across the city, the majority of the grant funding ends up being spent on those types of activities. One of the other things that we've looked at and have had success with in some other areas is redevelopment planning. And we've had initial meeting with city staff, and we were looking at an area of the city around the Frank State, I think it was Poplar and 12th Street, kind of that portion. I didn't just probably say all of those in the correct order, but around that area of, have some properties, commercial, abandoned commercial, industrial properties. And so, the redevelopment planning there will look at a, a broad reuse for the entire area, and will also target some of the specific properties, or in particular, more intersections, in how to do some planning, both short-term and long-term, for the reuse of that and returning those properties to productive use. And so, those, that's kind of our initial plan. I'm glad to come back to council as often as you would like to update and own it, and so, open to, to any, any questions at this stage.
Questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Mr. Sykes, so did y'all, because y'all were picking up and running with a ball that was already in play, which we appreciate, have you gotten an extension on the timeline?
So, yes, I think we're about, it's a four-year project, and I think we're kind of halfway. We're, we're kind of a little beyond the halfway point at this point. So, the extension is, is, we're going to, we need to show progress, in my experience. That's my opinion. But EPA has provided extensions in the past to, to grantees, but, you know, showing progress over these next six months in particular to 12 months will greatly increase the likelihood that that extension will be granted. And so, I had mentioned early on in the project with Wesley that I, I definitely think the city would, would, would likely get an extension, but we need to, you know, we need to get things in, get things moving.
And so, in the terms of business owners who might have a vacant building, what, what should council know that would be helpful to them?
Well, I, thank you for bringing that up. I think i- it's very common for property owners to, I always call it the head and the sand approach, and when it comes to environmental issues. They want to, they, they're interested in selling their property, but they don't want to open it up to the environmental things because they're concerned about the potential that they'll have to clean something up. Well, in, in, in reality, most all lenders today require at least a Phase 1 environmental site assessment. So, if you want to sell it, you're going to have to deal with it at some point. The city has the funding to assist these property owners with the Phase 1 assessment and Phase 2 assessment, so it, it, it's a benefit to the property owner, it's a benefit to the purchaser. And so, and just, just so everybody's aware, although it's city funding, this particular grant can provide funding for a private purchaser and a private owner. The city doesn't have to be involved in the real estate transaction to use the money. You could, if you wanted to, but it's not a requirement. And so, it's, yeah, I mean, one of the, one of the common struggles that grantees have not, is not unique to here, is getting property owners onboard and willing to allow access to the properties to do the Phase 1 assessments. We have some ideas. We're, like I said, we're, we're very early. I think outreach is important. We've talked about potentially having a, a outreach meeting with local realtors, lenders, and, and developers to make sure they're aware. And so, that's, that's a big part of it. Council, members of the community, if you have a relationship with a property owner, you know, please make them aware of the, of the funding, or put, point them in our direction to provide some, some additional information on how it could benefit them.
Nice thinking. Staff has a great list of all those vacant properties.
Yeah, and, yeah, and there is a, there was a list, yes. And so, we're also trying to even expand that list to some degree for, for that, so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have discussion and approval of the Accommodations Tax Committee's recommendation for distribution of funding for fiscal year 25, '26.
I have a recusal for the next two items, A and B.
Thank you.
I have a mayor, members of council, and this was a, an item that was deferred from last council meeting, and the mayor requested return of investment, which included in the packet. We have, it's broken into two sections of grant awards and then regional tourism awards. And city council may approve, deny, or alter the amounts of grant request outlined in the recommended budget.
Thank you. Thank you so much for getting what Councilmember Carter and I have been talking about, so that we know what the return on investment is for tourism dollars. It doesn't look like the chamber, Casey West Columbia Chamber's data was submitted this year.
I'm just following what, what was asked of the clerk, submitting into the packet.
Trying to think. I don't know if they, I know they didn't submit an application, and I don't think they did a return on investment. Looking now, sorry. Those are the two forms. One's from Experience Columbia, the other one you're scrolling through is...
Lake Murray Country.
Thank you, Lake Murray Country. So, that's all we have from the chamber, but it's just a letter, and it doesn't talk about any staff or return on investment.
Yes, that's all we received.
And this looks like last year's data.
Exactly, that's what we received from them.
Okay.
From last year, yes, ma'am.
Well, no, I mean, two years ago. It talks about 2023 and 2022.
I think we got this last, last accommodations tax process, the grant period.
Okay. Do you're really involved there, Councilmember Thomas? Did, they don't have dedicated staff as a volunteer committee for tourism?
We talked about it last year. They have a committee, like a visitors, you know, tourism committee, but they don't make the decision for the chamber. They kind of just help give ideas on ways to promote the whole entire Casey West Columbia area. Yes, ma'am. But they don't get paid or anything.
They're volunteers.
Yes, ma'am, volunteers, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
So, the staff, they handle, they handle that type of stuff, yes, ma'am.
Right, but they're not, they're not dedicated tourism staff like what the other two entered.
To my knowledge, Mayor, they, they handle, they have to have knowledge on both, to my knowledge. Yes, ma'am.
Sure, yeah. Well, actually, that brings up a really good point, because one of the things I saw in the letter was, where was it? Oh, so, "We make it a point to use our resources as a chamber visitor program to highlight all area businesses." I know, and I think you've heard this too, that we have a number of small businesses who are really struggling and would love that help, but they have the sense that they won't get any help unless they're a chamber member. But that says they highlight all area businesses. Y'all know?
I'm sure they do handle all businesses, yeah. I mean, it's a, it's membership-driven, obviously, but their, their job is to help the whole Casey West Columbia area.
All right, then we need to get a couple of those small businesses in connection with them.
Who would it be?
So, I know I've heard that from Trina Lime Caribbean Cafe. They would love some support.
Okay.
I know you're a big supporter of them. T-Pot?
T-Pot, yeah, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Really would love some of this highlighting.
Yes, ma'am.
I can look and see who else we're talking from.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Whomever.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
But, do we need a motion first, or can we discuss?
We're talking out loud right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right, we just went off of his discussion. Sure.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the grant awards as recommended by the Accommodations Tax Committee, Casey Women's Club, the Tartan Day, the museum, 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 three particular events for the museum, the Clonmel, Vitale, the Tartan Day, the Christmas traditions, and the African-American legends exhibit, as well as the Casey expense for add specialties. But also in that motion, I would like to modify the 30% earmark, and I'll explain that here in a second, that goes to regional tourism, to currently, recommendation is Experience Columbia 35%, Lake Murray Country is 30, and Greater CWC Chamber is 35%. And my motion to modify that is to 100% for the Casey West Columbia Chamber. And let me, let me add to that, Mayor, if I, if I may, that looking at the stat, the state statute and the municipal associations write up on how this accommodations tax works, you, there's a, there's two elements to accommodations tax. There's the state accommodations tax, which is 2%, and then there's a county and/or local accommodations tax that can be added to it not to exceed 3%. The county cannot impose an accommodations tax in the municipality without the municipality's position, approval. We choose to do all three remaining, and that number cannot exceed 3%. We choose to do the 3% ourselves, so that's a total of 5%. On the state side, if you exceed a certain threshold, $50,000, which we do, then you have to have this, an advisory committee by, by statute. And the way I'm looking at this, this document is that once you, you take the state money and you carve out $25,000, it goes into your general fund for, for expenses, and then you carve out the 30% earmark for tourism. Well, that 70% that's left over, that's what this committee addresses, and that's what they've addressed with the, with the hot flash and the Tartan Day and the different things. And the way I... In my heart, I just simply cannot send, ask these taxpayers, our folks that collect accommodations taxes, our businesses, to collect this money on our behalf and send it to us, and we say thank you very much, but we're gonna send that money to Richmond County, and we're gonna send the other part across the river on the other side of the lake. That does not sit well with me, and it's wrong. I've looked into this thing, I've studied websites, I've talked with people all over this county, and 99% of the people agree, this money needs to stay home and not to other entities. As far as I know, I looked in some magazines, I saw some ads, I looked on some websites, and I see a little, a little posting when we have an event, but day to day, our events that we have, our soiree, our festival, our music thing down here in the park, and some of the smaller events that, I don't know that these entities across the river help us or not. I couldn't find them on their websites. They have things that they focus on, and the good things, they do a really good job, both these things do. But I just cannot look Casey West Columbia businesses. This Chamber's got over 400 members. A big chunk of those members are Casey folks. I cannot look them in the eye and ask them to collect taxes and send them, and then I ship it across the river. I just won't do it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Just to clarify, this money doesn't go to the businesses, this is for tourism, but any other comments?
I think we need a second.
It says it's going to Experience Columbia and Lake Murray Country, those are businesses.
No, you said 400 members.
There's 400 members in the Chamber.
Right.
Our local Chamber. Not all of them are Casey businesses, just Casey West Columbia, Rainville.
Thank you, I know, you can make a second.
I apologize for interrupting.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, hon.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? I'll call the question. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sox?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor? No. Next, we have discussion and approval of hospitality tax grant funding for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Again, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, this was deferred from last meeting, the H tax, you see that it's separated into the grant awards and parks and tourism. The grant awards are listed as follows, and then we have the park tourism, where we have some city events, Parks Department operations, a new FTE position, Communications and Events Coordinator, that's a six-month, look at hiring that person in January, that's gonna personally help out with Mindy, since the city does have a lot of events we do. Police parks, golf carts, that'll be two golf carts for the River Walk, a parks replacement vehicle for police, another one for the Parks Department replacement vehicle, that is a 2007 Chevrolet Colorado. We have one parks equipment trailer, parks lawnmower replacement, an excavator for the River Walk, and a trailer-mounted pressure washer for our park department to keep our River Walk clean. City Council may approve, deny, or alter amounts of the grant request outlined in the recommended budget.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the hospitality award list as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I might say that every item on here, save two, have the word Casey in it, and I think those other two events, even though it says Junior League of Columbia Pickleball, I assume it's gonna be in our pickleball court, and the Philharmonic event, I'm not sure exactly where it's gonna be, but I think that's a Casey event also. Everything's Casey.
Yeah, Jim and I were talking about that one earlier.
Yes, I'm, I'm good on everything, thank you.
Instead, not where sure where it's supposed to be yet, but.
Okay.
And Mayor, just, just so I can just, you know, point out, I've gotten to run the Casey's Women's Hot Flash the last couple of years, and those ladies do an amazing job. It's grown, last couple of years, they, they just keep breaking records with attendance, and I'm very proud of those ladies. They really encourage the participants to go out to Casey businesses and restaurants after the race, even our state Senator Russell Odd shows up and races, you know, so I'm just very proud of the Women's Club of Casey, as well as the Parade Day is one of the most exciting days in our beautiful city. I think I heard the numbers that it was, well, over 20,000 people was lining the streets in Casey and West Columbia, which is just great for businesses. I know, I'm sure Krispy Kreme is very happy that the Parade Rock goes right past them, and I'm very blessed that, you know, that's in my district now, so I'm just very, 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 very happy to see these organizations just continue to do great work to bring people to our city to also eat and enjoy our quality of life, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll call the question. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sox?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor? Yes, thank you so moved. We have discussion and approval of proposal award to Kimley Horn for comprehensive, oh, thank you.
No, no, Mayor, you, she moved, she moved, I know.
I'm trying to get Jim on the radio.
You're doing a good job, you're doing a good job, you're doing a good job, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
No, no problem.
We finished the whole meeting.
Hey, 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 trust me, I'm.
He can't have gone far. Bye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Lambert. Nashville nights, y'all go to Nashville nights, starting this Friday?
This Friday.
This Friday.
Appreciate it.
Singer-songwriters, great time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Good night, Ms. Walker.
Good night, Tim.
Yes, ma'am. Good night, Tim. Was he hiding in his truck?
Gentlemen, y'all coming?
Hello?
See, Jim, you see who's wasting time now? They're trying to keep you here from your family.
Okay. Our next agenda item is discussion and approval of proposal award to Kimley Horn for Comprehensive Safety Action Plan for Safe and Active Streets.
Council approval is needed to accept Kimley Horn's proposal for city's comprehensive safety action plan for safe and active streets, and authorize the city manager execute the contract. The city sought a qualified firm to develop a comprehensive safety action plan to address critical transportation safety needs. Particular emphasis have been placed on four major intersections that have become known as safety challenges. These intersections include around the 300 block, 3,000 block of US 321 Charleston Highway, Knox Abbott Drive and 12th Street, Frank Street and Julius Felder, and 12th Street and Frank Street. These locations have been repeated incidents involving pedestrians and bicycles. Kimley Horn's proposal outlines a comprehensive approach that directly addresses these locations with strategies focused on improving safety, accessibility, and mobility. Development of this comprehensive safety action plan is a vital step toward making Casey's safer, streets safer and more equitable for all users. Kimley Horn was selected as the most responsive, responsible proposer through the city's RFP process, demonstrating extensive experience in safety planning, community engagement. Staff recommends that council approve Kimley Horn's proposal, recognize him as the most responsive and responsible proposer, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the contract. And you know, this was a grant, so it was a 25% match.
Thank, and it's a follow-on, because this is something we've been working on.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is the next phase. Thank you guys for working so hard on that. Is there a motion for the staff recommendation?
Move that we approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, is, is there any additional funding anywhere to add to these particular intersections?
We can look at programs later with DOT involving them and other grants after the proposal's completed. Once we have the proposal, that's what we need.
I think you would agree with me that there's probably some other intersections in the city that are extremely dangerous, and my reason for asking the question, is it easier now to add some funding to an existing project than to bring them back and have to start completely new projects?
We can actually give a vendor, propose that question, for sure.
Um, Act Steel and Knox Abbott has created some very horrific accidents over the last couple of years. That's certainly one of them that I think we would need to look at.
We just had a fatal two months ago.
So my suggestion is not to change the vote, but for us to take into consideration that if it's cheaper for us to add to this particular program, that we do that versus having to pay a lot more to bring it back in for one or two other intersections.
Yes, sir. Which one? Give it to Mike.
Awesome. All right, so you'll just get back with us on some answers and see what they say?
Yes, I think Wesley did the white paper, but that's you.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Wesley.
Any other discussion? I'll call the question. Mayor Pro Tim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sox?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor? Yes, thank you so moved. We have discussion and approval of ordinance 2025-05 to adopt an annual budget, levy a property tax, and provide revenue for the city of Casey for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2026, and to adopt and establish certain new fees and charges with amounts. This is the second reading.
Mayor, Members of Council, nothing's changed since the first reading. There is some identifiers, as we discussed in the past, it was the 3% CPI, which is the inflation this year, and that's how we determined the percentage of increases for city services. One, I did fail to mention, though, we did put 25,000 in admin salaries for employee incentives to live in the city. So every year, they'll have to identify that they lived in the city for the year, and it'll either, it depends how many people are involved in that. Right now, there's 25, so we're looking for an 800 to $1,000 incentive, one-time stipend every July for them to live in the city, to incentivize for living in the city, take home vehicles and such for, I mean, you know, three miles from city home, so, thank you.
And I'm assuming we can, that that's legal, that we can separate out employees and give bonuses to some and not the other? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, that'll be fine.
Thank you.
Staff recommend second reading.
Thank you.
Motion to approve for any discussion. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have one question, and once again, Kelly, Allison, thank you, well done, and like we said last time, it's a terrific budget and a terrific product here for what we can actually dig down into pretty deep and see a line. There's one line item that I've got a question about, it's under, my computer died, so I don't have it. It's MBLG, the Midlands Business Leaders Group, there's a line item in there, Jimmy, for $17,000. I'm gonna tell you what I've learned, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that this is an incentive, an initiative by this business group to rename, market, prioritize, advertise, whatever you want to call it, of this potential River Walk, the full length of the River Walk from Ariane Timberman Trail all the way to the dam, and that this is a one-of-two-year budget item, $17,000 to us, that apparently is gonna be shared at a minimum with us, West Columbia, Columbia, and maybe Lexington County, or they, they may or may not be involved.
No, they'd be involved.
So, so what I'm, what I'm asking here is, so if we're at $34,000, and there's three cities, that's whatever, about 100, 102, whatever it is, and if we add another 34, if Lexington County's involved, we're going to send this money once again somewhere else to a company to promote and advertise and name a River Walk, then in my opinion, my River Walk's already got a name, it's called Casey River Walk. I think West Columbia calls theirs the West Columbia River Walk. So my question is, am I right in what I'm thinking's going on here? And B, how does stuff like this, as a new line item, how does it get in our budget? Does it, do you just get an email from these people, or a text, or a letter, or, how does the process work?
This group started when, it was last year sometime, the initial, initial meetings of rebranding the River Walk section from the dam all the way to back to Casey, which is Casey's end, and it's gonna be.
Let me pause, you said this group, MBLG or another group?
No, the Midlands Business Leadership.
All right, that group's been in play for a long, long time, not just the last couple of years, but I thought maybe they phased completely out.
No.
Are we represented?
Yeah, we are. I want to get meeting invites, I think, I don't remember, the last one I went to was in October, November, I think the one.
We need to get them to come and give a presentation to council about that.
I think I'd be more comfortable awarding that funding once they've given us a presentation and what we know it's, I'm sure that's where you're maybe getting to.
Absolutely, because I just did a dissertation on sending money somewhere else.
Yeah.
And, you know, as far as rebranding, I got some money to brand my River Walk, I'm just troubled that why this, the business folks aren't doing it, it's their initiative, they've got more, and this is taxpayer money, I'm saying, not business folks money.
Yeah. And that, and it's MBLG that requested the money?
Yes, sir.
They're also the ones who are coordinating the nine entryway improvements, the gateways, thank you. That was something that when I was the president of Ingenuity SC, we spearheaded, and I made sure ours was the first on the list, Ford Jackson's is the second, but that's a regional collaboration to do that. And then when Ingenuity goes down, we handed that project over to MBLG, and they've been moving that forward.
But that's the 302 project?
Yep.
Is this 302 project, or is this, no, this is River Walk?
Same, same group, but was it not in last year's budget?
It wasn't.
Just this year? Yeah, that, that might have gotten lost in the staff shuffle, but, but yeah, get them to come give a presentation. You could, you could award it and not release it.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly award it, we don't have to pay it. Well, Jim.
Well, just so long as there's a stipulation, not, I'm totally opposed to spending $17,000 on something that's already named.
Twice, next year too. $34,000.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let them, I'll tell you what it is, it's a $19 million budget, so, but, yeah, I mean, it's, every dollar counts, so.
Yes, it does.
But other than that, it's a beautiful budget.
Well.
I want to make sure that whatever the vote is reflects the will of council. If, if you want to modify that or put a, a condition on those funds, there would need to be a motion to amend that, the first motion, or I believe that was Mayor Pro Tim James' motion. Otherwise, if you just approve it, it technically will be allocated, and the city manager would have the authority, notwithstanding the fact that it was discussed tonight.
Right, right, right.
It needs to be part of a motion if there's going to be some, some change, that's all.
Thank you.
So, do you want me to change my motion?
Mayor Pro Tim, I would like you to change your motion.
Thank you. So my motion is to approve the budget with the exception of the $17,000 that's allocated for MBLG, to hold it in abeyance for council to later approve. Pardon, huh?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Anything else with the budget?
Great job, Jim. Great job, Kelly. Great job, staff. Awesome job. Super good job, super good job.
I know, Councilmember Sox, in the last meeting, you gave some budget numbers about the one-time retention bonus that staff got last year, and I would just encourage you to get Jim to set up a meeting with Kelly like he did for me, because what she told me about that money was vastly different than what you shared in the last meeting. It actually included using some money that was a gift. Pardon I. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Anything else with the budget?
Great job, Jim. Great job, Kelly. Great job, staff. Awesome job. Super good job, super good job.
Um, I know Councilmember Sox, in the last meeting, you gave some budget numbers about the one-time retention bonus that staff got last year, and I would just encourage you to get Jim to set up a meeting with Kelly like he did for me, um, because what she told me about that money was vastly different than what you shared in the last meeting. Um, it actually included using some, uh, money that was a gift from the Boyd Foundation and another grant, so I know you want to get that right.
Yeah, I believe it came from Kelly, actually, though, so, um, we can hash that out later. Um, we can all go meet and talk about it and see exactly where it came from, if y'all just want to show us where it came from then, or produce, produce the documentation.
Yeah.
Cause, um...
Yep, sounds great. I'll call the question.
Mayor Pro Tim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sox?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yeah, uh, no, actually, no, so, thank you. Um, so moved though. Approval to enter the following committee approved minutes into the city's record. Casey Housing Authority from March 18th, Museum and Historical Commission from April 2nd, Casey Housing Authority Special Meeting, April 8th.
Move that we enter all sets of minutes into the record.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll call the question.
Mayor Pro Tim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sox?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. You have before your request for an appointment to the, um, Museum Commission. Mr. Will Britt's position on the Museum Commission expired in May, and he does not wish to serve again. The city has one potential member application on file, Mr. Campbell Memes. His application is attached for your review.
Move that we appoint Mr. Campbell Memes to the Museum Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call the question.
Mayor Pro Tim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sox?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. We have the city manager's report.
Yes, from Ashley. City's annual calendar competition now open through August the 11th. Don't have to be a professional photographer to have your city photos featured. Now follow the city on LinkedIn. New city profile will feature new positions and city news items. Casey Character Camp, cheap way, putting that together is July 14th through 24th. Thanks to CBD and our SROs for hosting this camp annually, where local students get to participate in unique leadership and character-driven events for two weeks. Vote for our Casey Historical Museum as best regional museum, and for Soraya on State as the best music festival, and the 2025 Best of Columbia in the Free Times. Way to go, Mindy. And the Soraya is on State is also nominated for best annual festival in the state newspaper. The Avenue Drainage Projects are in the beginning stages of construction. American Engineering is managing both projects and communications. Residents, residents of the affected areas will receive door hangers while the rest of the city will receive flyers explaining. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any council comments tonight?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Councilman Carter, we've talked about up here, we talked about burgers, we need to talk about pizza. So, I've partnered with the Casey West Columbia Library and Village Idiot Pizza to encourage our amazing teens to read over the summer. So teens in ninth through 12th grade can join the library's summer reading program from May 30th to August 1st. When they sign up, they'll receive a free book. Upon completing the reading challenge, they'll earn exciting prizes, including a free large pizza to be redeemed at any Village Idiot location for their entire family to enjoy. And I'm not sure if y'all have Village Idiot pizza, but it's truly amazing. Um, the summer reading kickoff party for this is on June 10th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Casey West Columbia Branch Library for anyone that would love to attend, and Village Idiot is going to get out free pizza. So, you know, I remember when I was a teen, when there was free pizza at a library, I was always there. So, so if you were a teen, if you're a parent that's encouraging your teen to read, here's a great way to incentivize them to be like, hey, you reading gets us a free dinner night. And so I'm, I'm, I'm really hoping a lot of teens really participate in this. I know the library told me, um, they were very excited that I was able to bring that partnership so that they can increase readership in the community, which we know when teens read during the summer is only going to help them when they come back to school. So, I, I hope our amazing teens take advantage of it. On top of that, uh, last month, I posted on my bottom for Casey social media page how Casey Elementary, uh, would love for men to start getting involved with, with the school. And last month, me and, and some amazing other men and some women came out and we gave high fives to the kids, and oh my God, these kids were so hyped up and so happy to see us. Like, some kids will run back and give us two high fives, and, uh, some kids actually remember me in the community when I was out shopping or at Glenwood Park, just, you know, just shooting on basketball. So, um, the kids really enjoyed not only seeing, you know, um, us, but just the school telling us that, hey, we would love to see more men just come up and step up, um, because they've shared with me some of the stories of the things some of the kids deal with, and they want men to feel like they, they have a place to step up and be role models and, and mentor these, these kids. So, one thing they told me was, there's a, there's an amazing program currently going on, Girls on the Run, and I know the ladies, they're running hard, um, they're getting mentorship, but sadly, there's not a boys' program, and as much as I love to run, I want to stay married, so I can't always do everything, but if there, if there are amazing men in our, in this community, um, that love to run, that love to mentor, um, the, the future of our city, uh, please consider contacting Casey Elementary and letting them know, because we, we need to give our boys an amazing opportunity to, um, run, run out any stresses they might be having, or just run to be, you know, fit, or, you know, to have good health, but more importantly, have a good mentorship. Uh, so I, I challenge any amazing men in our community to help step up, so we can help these, um, these boys have some good mentors, as well as, um, just to keep on everyone's radar, because, you know, I, I take this to heart, because the schools in our community, and I, and I've said this multiple times, I know what we do up here is only one small piece of the puzzle in regards to helping our families in our city, but, um, speaking to the school officials, um, they've educated me that, um, Casey Elementary is the only school in the area that serves 900-plus kids and has, and has over an 80% poverty rate. Um, there are schools that have high poverty rates in the midlands, but none have the size that, that we have, so, you know, we, we just passed the budget with a, a increase of less than $4, um, per month, and, um, you know, just, just doing things incremental to give our families an opportunity to hopefully get out of that poverty rate means a lot to me to try to see what I can do to, to help to the best of my abilities. And so, you, you know, I, I hope to continue to work with everyone on, on this council to, to find ways where we can continue to help our families. And again, I know we're only a piece of the puzzle, but we're still a piece that matters, and hopefully the other entities that also play a part might see what we're doing and realize, hey, we want to make sure that we are considering everyone when we make these decisions, and that we want to see people get out of this poverty rate and continue to make better, you know, and continue to increase their, their, um, profits, so then they can continue to do great things in the community. So, I'm just very excited, so let me know if you have any questions. I'd love to direct you to their staff and to continue to better our beautiful city. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, got some exciting news. The SC DOT released their 2026 resurfacing plan last week, last week, which includes Airport Boulevard, um, and Highway 302, all the way from the expressway to Charleston Highway, and then up to the subway. Uh, so it's very exciting. Uh, as mentioned earlier, though, and I'm glad it jotted my memory, we have those plantings that I believe are supposed to take place in the fall, um, from the MBLG, I always mix that acronym up, group in Lexington County. Uh, so I want to make sure that we coordinate with SC DOT and make sure they're aware that that's going to go on right before this. I know that there was some recent road resurfacing done that ruined a lot of boats, I don't know, probably ruined a lot of plantings too, if they weren't aware of this and planned accordingly. Um, so, very excited about that, and it's much needed out, out our way. That's all.
Thank you. I believe that those are working in tandem.
Sweet.
Mayor, thank you. Um, Jim, I don't want to overdo the accolades, but I do have a few things to say, um, to everyone, and, and especially you. When, uh, when I got the email in early May from Jim that he was, uh, retiring, uh, it was, it was a little bit of a shock, but not a great shock, but it, it, uh, it's something that, uh, that I think has been going on. But I would like to just take a few minutes to commend you and thank you for the, for outstanding work you've done here for us. You have, for the first time since I've been on council in this nine and a half years, you've made me feel informed and have provided me with all the information necessary for me to make an informed decision, and, and I do thank you for that. You've included and kept all of us up to date on any and all issues pertaining to city council matters, and that hadn't always been the case, and for that, I do thank you. Uh, you, but first and foremost, you've always put the employees first in your decisions, and you've never yielded or capitulated from that standard, and you've allowed these employees to, to engage with us, which, uh, is something that, that is much appreciated. And, uh, while your tenure may have been short, I, I can label it overwhelmingly successful by the, the words you heard in here from these folks tonight, the partnerships and relationships you formed with all our local and regional partners. And, uh, again, for the past 10 months, I've had the opportunity to meet and engage with a lot of those, uh, stakeholders and partners in the community, and they all said one thing, that he is the best city manager we've ever had, and the common directive was, don't lose him. Well, we did. Uh, but I want to let the employees and the citizens know that he, he gave us adequate notice in, in early May, and while the timeline is shrinking, we're doing, we're going to do everything we can in a timely manner to make, like Mayor said earlier, we're going to make the right decision here. Um, we're, we're starting Friday, we may, not in Friday, but we're certainly going to start, and, uh, we, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna find the next leader, and it's going to be the right leader. And we appreciate y'all bearing with us and indulging us, and we appreciate the rest of staff picking up, uh, the, the void there and, uh, continuing the good work that all the people in this city do, and for that, I thank all of, all of y'all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Um, I, for executive session, I don't think we have anything for item B. So it's just, um, discussion of Lexington County Economic Development Projects relating to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services, encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses within the city. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session for said reasons?
Move that we enter executive session for said reasons.
Second.
Second, thank you. I'll call the question.
Mayor Pro Tim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sox?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved.
There you go.
Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved.
There you go.
Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go. There you go.
Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
There you go. Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
There you go. Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
There you go. Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
There you go. Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
There you go. Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
There you go. Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
There you go. Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
There you go. Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
There you go. Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
There you go. Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
There you go. Okay. Okay. So no action was taken in executive session except to come out of executive session. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll call the question.
Mayor Pratim James?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sot?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you so moved. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.